Good evening and welcome to the Buncombe County Board of Education Regular Meeting for Thursday, May the first, 2025. Mission of Buncombe County Schools is to foster a culture of excellence and continuous improvement where every student will thrive and learn from our exceptional educators. Our vision is for students to graduate on time, prepared to pursue their chosen path as critical thinkers and collaborative leaders in our diverse society. I've called the meeting to order, and now please stand for the presentation of colors. Tonight, our presentation of colors is provided by Reynolds High School, JROTC, instructed by Lieutenant Colonel David Wise, United States Army Retired, and Sergeant First Class Jamie Brown, United States Army Retired.
Right, face. Free then, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry your colors. Right, face. Mark, eyes, mark. Guard, all. I'm carrying colors.
Thank you. I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Board members, first item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next is the superintendent's comments. Dr. Jackson, you have the floor.
Good evening, parents, members of the community, board members, and teammates. Welcome to the month of May, the final stretch of our school year with just 27 days remaining. This season is one of both celebration and focused determination. Across our schools, we're seeing remarkable achievements in academics, the arts, and athletics. At the same time, our students and staff remain deeply engaged in making every instructional moment count. I could not be more proud of the dedication and work ethic on display in our classrooms. I believe that future generations will look back to the challenges we have faced this year, to our response and to our service, and they will remark that this was one of the finest years in the history of Buncombe County Schools, as much has been required of our school system teammates, and they've responded. They've responded with grace, with strength, with determination, and with love. Our high school musical season is in full swing with performances this weekend at Inca, Irwin, Owen, and Robertson High Schools. You can find all the showtimes on our arts calendar on our district website. In addition, the high school all-county visual art show is currently on display at the Asheville Mall through May 17th. My wife and I had the pleasure of visiting the exhibit, and we were absolutely inspired by the incredible creativity and talent of our student artists. I'm so grateful that Buncombe County Schools continues to prioritize the arts and provide meaningful opportunities for students to express and grow their gifts. In the world of athletics, our spring teams have entered spring playoff season, and we are already seeing great successes on the fields, courts, tracks, and courses. There's no better way to enjoy a beautiful spring evening than by cheering on our student athletes. Their talent, teamwork, and perseverance continue to make us proud. While the arts and athletics enrich our students' experiences, they are ultimately in service to our core mission, academics. In classrooms across the county, I see firsthand the extraordinary effort of our students and staff. I'm continually moved by their dedication and am grateful, deeply grateful, to our teachers, support staff, and school teachers and school leaders for the difference they make each and every day. At our recent budget work session, I shared a belief that I strongly hold. You can understand what a person or organization truly values by looking at two things, their calendar and their checkbook. How we spend our time and how we allocate our resources speaks volumes about who we are and what we stand for. Tonight, the board will consider our local budget request, the result of months of thoughtful planning and collaboration. This work began last fall and has involved input from every school and department across the school system. I want to thank our board members for their time, insight, and advocacy throughout this process, including participation in six budget work sessions and countless additional conversations. Our proposed budget is built on a foundation of sustaining the critical services we currently provide to students and families. You'll also hear tonight about the outstanding efforts of our student support services team who continue to walk alongside students and staff on the long path of recovery following Hurricane Helene, the most devastating natural disaster in our state's history. The needs remain great, and our commitment to meeting them remains strong. Our work is guided by the Buncombe County Schools Strategic Plan, a document shaped by literally thousands of voices through surveys, town halls, and school-level conversations. It is a reflection of our community's hopes and expectations, and I'm proud to say that our local budget request aligns fully with that vision. In Buncombe County Schools, we give our very best because our students deserve nothing less. As we have shown throughout the year, from even the most tragic of challenges in Buncombe County Schools, together we rise. To our team and to our board members, thank you for all that you do for the students, families, teachers, and staff of Buncombe County Schools. Mr. Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you very much Superintendent Jackson for those comments. I'd like to take just a quick moment of privilege to acknowledge that we have a few special guests with us tonight. First of all, Sheriff Quentin Miller is with us here this evening. If you mind just waving to folks. Sheriff Miller, we truly are grateful for your service to our school system and all that you do to support us in our operations through your SROs and their interactions, their positive interactions with our students in our schools every day. It's absolutely tremendous, and we are eternally grateful for you and all of your SROs. Thank you. Also, we have a few scouts with us tonight. I want to say welcome. I appreciate all the scouts do in our schools as well. I was at the Reynolds High School 5K this past Saturday, and there was a bunch of scouts out on the course acting as course marshals, and I see scouts volunteering in our schools all the time. So, thank you for being here and appreciate you. All right, moving on. Next up on our agenda is the good news. Mr. Omer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Jackson, BCS teammates, and families. We are going to begin good news this evening with a group of students from Inca Middle School who have literally gone the distance in the Battle of the Books. Dr. Reed is going to help with the hardware for this one. If we could have team members Ellery McCray, Anna Ruth Lott, Lily Burbank, and Graham McGill join us with their coaches, Ms. Bethay and Ms. Davis. If y'all could come right down front, along with Ms. Morrell, our district media specialist, and Principal Clark, along with Ms. Lewis. We're going to tell you about the incredible journey these students have taken. So, after the Buncombe County Schools Battle of the Books competition, this team advanced to the regional competition in Brabart. They weren't done doing traveling because they finished in first place. They advanced to the state Battle of the Books competition, which was today in Statesville. We asked them to make a little detour before heading back to Inca so they could be here for us to honor tonight. We are so appreciative of them representing not only Inca Middle School but Buncombe County Schools and the entire western North Carolina region in the Battle of the Books. Thank you very much. And we should also mention that Kuntz Intermediate is representing Buncombe County Schools in the elementary state battle of the books next week, so stay tuned. Just before spring break, the Buncombe County Schools Migrant Education Program received a prestigious honor from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and we invite that team to join us up now, which includes Lisette Sherlin, Johanna Coria Arguera, Nancy Moore, Katie Hobbs, Blanca Haridia, and Wendy Acevedo Lula, also the BCS Federal Programs Director, Jean Anne Yates. This team was honored by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction with its Continuous Program Improvement Award. This is an award that recognizes programs that have made significant progress in improving their services and improving student outcomes. The recognition honors innovative support services and collaborative work with community organizations that provide access to high-quality educational opportunities. Congratulations to our BCS migrant education team. Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you very much. BCS Athletics Specialist David Ball is going to help with the next presentation as we share an honor that is four years in the making. If Inca High Athletic Director Coach Brian Carver could please join us, along with Principal Harris and Ms. Lewis. Coach Carver has completed the rigorous process of becoming a Certified Master Athletic Administrator by the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. Coach Carver is only the second person in BCS to earn this achievement. The first is the man who presented him with that plaque, Coach David Ball, more than 20 years ago. It is a commitment to continuous learning. We are so proud of your achievement. Thank you so much, Coach Carver, for your commitment to education and to your students. Dr. Johnson is going to help with the next two presentations, as tonight, we recognize some students from AC Reynolds High School student athletes who are joining us tonight. If members of the men's and women's basketball teams, along with Principal Alexander can join us, and Chairman Elliott and the coaches, if y'all will come forward as well. We want to share the story of their community service projects of these extraordinary student athletes. Their efforts include volunteering to help produce the Adaptive Cornhole Tournament for western North Carolina students hosted at AC Reynolds. They've also been out in the community, participating in a community cleanup in the Craigtown community, and helping families as they continue their recovery from the hurricane. From the women's basketball team, Addie Long, Serenity Borja, Peyton Harvey, and Coach Amanda Whitaker. From the men's basketball team, Declan Brown, Zach Dickie, Grant Clayton, and Coach Ryan Stevens. We also want to recognize they couldn't be here with us tonight, but Coach Laws and members of the football team who have been helping as well. Thank you, AC Reynolds student athletes, for your leadership and your community service. Also this evening, we would like to honor Sergeant Corey Ray of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office. Sergeant Ray, if you'll join us up front, please, along with your wife, Ms. Karen Ray, and Sheriff Miller, if you will join us as well. Sergeant Ray has worked as a school resource officer for two decades. He has worked in the Irwin, Robertson, and North Buncombe districts, where he is known as a caring, trusted adult for students and staff alike. He has also spent many a night in this place with all of us, watching over the monthly school board meetings. Sergeant Ray is going to be retiring in June, and this might be, unless we can convince him otherwise, this might be his last time at one of these particular gatherings, so we wanted to put him in the spotlight tonight and thank him for his dedication and service to the people of Buncombe County and to the students and staff of Buncombe County Schools, the families of Buncombe County School students, too. And if y'all will indulge us for a minute, we've got so many SROs with us, if y'all Thank you so much to all of our SROs. See Sergeant Ray on the way out, he's got a sign-up sheet for all of y'all to cover his school board meetings coming, moving forward. Finally, this evening, there was a surprise announcement three weeks ago, revealing the 2026 Buncombe County Schools Teacher of the Year. This teacher represents the excellence that happens in every Buncombe County Schools classroom every day. Thank you so much to the Buncombe County Schools Foundation for its support of the Teacher of the Year program. Ms. Christie Cheek, the foundation's executive director, is going to help with this presentation, which is the culmination of a big process in an extraordinary year. Teachers from each school select a Teacher of the Year, then a teacher-led committee meets with those teachers, learning about their practice and philosophy. This year, welding teacher Darrell Fox of North Buncombe High School has been named the 2026 Buncombe County Schools Teacher of the Year. Mr. Fox, we are so proud of you. He will now represent all the teachers in Buncombe County Schools in the western region Teacher of the Year Competition. Keep that cup shiny. We wish you the best of luck. If we could have all of our good news guests follow Brianna with the camera. Congratulations to you all. Remember, you can always stay in touch with all the great things happening in Buncombe County Schools at buncomeschools.org, and also follow Buncombe Schools on Facebook and Instagram. Congratulations, thank you all for joining us tonight. Mr. Chair, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Omer. Next on our agenda, we are going to hear from Dr. Jamie Johnson and Shannon Martin about Strategic Plan Highlights, Student Support Services Building a Brighter Path. So, Dr. Johnson and Shannon, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. It is our honor to present tonight's Strategic Plan feature. We will showcase the remarkable progress we've made since the challenges brought by Hurricane Helene. We invite you on a journey through our shared efforts and achievements, looking back at where we've been, appreciating where we are today, and envisioning the promising path ahead as we continue to move forward together. This presentation reflects the resilience, dedication, and grit of our students, staff, and community, and we are proud to share the results of our collective hard work and our plans for building a brighter path for the future. For the past year, our strategic plan has served as a roadmap for addressing the needs of our students, families, and staff. Tonight, we highlight connections to key goals that have guided our recovery efforts since Hurricane Helene. Goal 2.1 emphasizes prioritizing kindness, compassion, and empathy in every interaction with students and families. In the aftermath of Hurricane Helene, these values became the foundation of our efforts as we work to locate displaced families, assess individual and community needs, and provide support. Empathy was not just a guiding principle, it was the fundamental tool in fostering trust and rebuilding hope during a time of crisis. Connecting to goal 2.3, embedding wellness activities in the core curriculum has been crucial as we address the trauma and emotional recovery of students and staff. Key behavioral support initiatives like positive behavioral interventions and supports and restorative practices have played a vital role in creating safe and supportive learning environments post-storm. These strategies have helped us build resilience within our school communities, ensuring students receive the care and the guidance they need. Connection to goal four, providing ongoing support for staff, has been essential in preparing them to meet the extraordinary challenges following the storm. While the original goal envisioned equipping staff for instructional and behavioral support, it has now evolved to include training and resources for crisis response and recovery. The foundational work in crisis recovery and our relationship with Sherry Lovray and the Crisis Management Institute that began decades ago helped us amplify our ability to meet needs effectively and ensure we were able to provide staff members with much-needed support. When this strategic plan was first created, none of us could have imagined we'd be using it to track down families after a disaster, to deal with widespread trauma, or rely so heavily on the compassion and generosity of others across the state and nation to meet urgent needs. It's a testament to our commitment to providing ongoing intentional support for every staff member, no matter the circumstances. As we all know, Hurricane Helene struck North Carolina on September 27th, causing historic flooding, catastrophic landslides, heavy rainfall, strong winds, and tornadoes across the region. The storm became one of the deadliest and costliest hurricanes in our state's history, leaving widespread devastation and a long road to recovery. leaving widespread devastation and a long road to recovery. Helene ripped through our area, and we found ourselves in the aftermath. Initially, there was shock, and that quickly gave way to the realization of the devastation. We immediately shift to recovery, locating our families, assessing needs, and responding as best we could. During recovery, we leaned heavily on the expertise of Sherri Lovray from the Crisis Management Institute. Sherri shared this graphic with us, highlighting that at that very moment, we were in the heroic stage of response. Our people truly became heroes. Bus drivers literally saved lives by driving others to safety. Staff went door-to-door to locate children and families, delivering food, water, and batteries for radios so they could access vital news reports. Our school was transformed into hubs of support serving as distribution centers for food, water, and other essential supplies. They also served as shelters for emergency crews and logistical centers, temporarily housing power poles and facilitating critical recovery efforts. We worked tirelessly to connect those in need with whatever resources were available and needed at the time. During this heroic period, we were united by a single goal: recovery and reentry. We knew our students needed us, and we needed them. Together, we achieved what seemed impossible: reopening schools just weeks after the most devastating natural disaster to ever strike our area. As one high school principal described it, "The first day back was the most impactful day of my career, a day of healing and wellness for both students and staff." The support for our students and staff during the reentry phase was nothing short of extraordinary. It would take countless pages to acknowledge everyone who contributed in meaningful ways. Students received stuffed Battle Pups to ease anxiety, while hundreds of counselors from across the state arrived to offer their expertise. To boost morale and replace what was lost, students and staff were given new shoes and school logo hoodies. We were deeply blessed by this incredible outpouring of care and generosity. We were worried that students and families were experiencing such hardships that attendance would be low and behaviors would be elevated. That could not have been further from the truth. Attendance was higher than ever, and behaviors were almost nonexistent. It was clear, our students did need us. They needed each other, and we needed them just as much. And if we go back to our graphic, we were in the honeymoon phase. Despite the obstacles, we remained BCS-strong and found innovative solutions. One example was partnering with EverDriven, a service like Uber for students. As our McKinney-Vento population grew by more than 1,000 students, and many families were displaced outside their school zone, we found ways for students to remain at their home schools. This effort helped them reconnect with their school families and regain that critical sense of belonging during such a challenging time. Another important way we continue to support students is by helping them make sense of the traumatic events we've all experienced, while also building strong connections within our school communities. Our goal is to foster a sense of belonging and balance the demands of teaching and learning with a focus on overall wellness. Many schools have introduced practices like morning meetings or afternoon check-ins to build resilience and promote emotional wellness. Some of our secondary schools have adopted a monthly afternoon activity schedule, setting aside time for community-building and belonging-focused experiences. Principals report that as a result, students and staff feel more connected than ever. These efforts go beyond the classroom. Schools have hosted special field trips and welcomed guests from therapy dogs that bring comfort and joy to a surprise visit by the Carolina Panthers. And it's not just about students. Schools are also intentionally creating time for staff to connect. Sometimes, something as simple as sharing a meal together can mean so much to so many. Right now, we're in a phase that often happens six months to a year after a traumatic event. It's a time when reality sets in. We fully realize that no amount of effort can undo what happened. But we also start to recognize that we have a lot to be grateful for. This can take a toll on our health and our well-being. What we see in schools, more people are getting sick with illnesses like strep throat and the flu. Attendance rates are dropping for both staff and students. Behaviors are escalating. Patience, especially among staff, is wearing thin. And emotions are elevated for all. Fortunately, we are able to provide resources like the Employee Assistance Network and other supports for adults because we know that our students can only be as well as the adults caring for them. It's a challenging period, but recognizing this as part of the cycle helps create awareness and understanding, which is a much-needed step toward addressing these challenges. We are proud of where we are. Though we had much-needed guidance from crisis response experts, BCS excelled in the face of devastation. Our response has been highlighted across the state. Our auxiliary directors were featured in a regional presentation showcasing their exemplary leadership. DPI focused us in a statewide wellness conference. And our Social Worker of the Year, Molly Pittman, presented just yesterday to the State Board of Education on the mental health concerns post-Helene. During her presentation, Ms. Pittman highlighted the growing mental health concerns among students, many of whom have now endured two major crises by the time they're teenagers. First came COVID, which disrupted nearly a year of in-person learning. Then came Hurricane Helene, sealing another month of school. These events took more than just classroom time. They interrupted friendships, routines, and the stability that school provides. The long-term impact is still unknown. But the most powerful part of Ms. Pittman's message came through the story of a student who earned her diploma at mid-year graduation. Ms. Pittman has known this student since she was seven years old and has supported her throughout every stage of her journey. Days before graduation, Ms. Pittman asked, "If you could go back and give your second-grade self-advice, what would you say?" The student replied, "I would tell myself not to give up. It has to get better." That answer says it all. When people ask what our students need, the truth is simple. We can't give up on them, and we have to keep making things better. That might mean more accessible mental health care, more teaching assistance, free meals, field trips, counselors, social workers, arts programs, CTE, athletics, all the things. Whatever it looks like, we owe it to them to try. And as we continue working toward a brighter future, we recognize that year two may bring even greater challenges than year one in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. According to the Trauma Recovery Framework, next school year has us entering the reconstruction phase. This phase is very different from the initial heroic or honeymoon phases as it is grounded in the awareness of the massive loss we have collectively experienced. During this time, students and staff will be navigating a mix of emotions, moments of grief, unexpected memories, and acts of remembrance. At the same time, we will be embarking on new initiatives and projects. While we will never forget what we've been through, we strive to find a healthy balance between honoring the past and building toward the future. We recognize that students lost over a month of instructional time earlier this year, which has brought added stress for both staff and students. That stress will continue into next year. We also know that meaningful learning can only happen when students feel safe. Safety is the first step. It creates the conditions for teachers to build supportive relationships with their students. A safe environment and supportive relationships form the essential foundation upon which academic growth and success are built. Continual understanding and addressing the needs of our students requires a comprehensive and collaborative approach. Teachers and support staff play a pivotal role as they interact with students daily and often serve as the first point of contact for identifying challenges. But a complete student services team is essential to ensuring every child receives the care and support they require. Student services teams are made up of professionals with distinct but complementary roles. School counselors focus on academic guidance, career readiness, and personal and social development. They help students navigate challenges like anxiety, peer relationships, and transitions. Counselors also lead initiatives to promote a positive school culture and emotional wellness. Social workers serve as the bridge between the school, home, and the community. They address barriers to learning such as family instability or socioeconomic challenges. Social workers advocate for students by connecting families with resources like food, housing, or mental health support. School psychologists assess and support students' behavioral and learning needs. They can recommend interventions for behavioral or emotional issues and work closely with teachers and parents to develop strategies that support individual success. School nurses are available to address health needs that may impact learning from managing chronic conditions to responding to illnesses or injuries. Nurses collaborate with families and healthcare providers to create health plans that ensure students can focus on learning, and they monitor the overall health and wellness of the student body, including preventive care and health education. So how do we rise up to the challenge of recovery together? Through our people. People are essential, and strong schools start with strong staff. We must maintain current staffing levels. Teachers, support staff, and student services team are the foundation of a resilient and thriving school community. An appropriate level of support is critical to meeting the growing needs of our students and staff. We know our students need our staff. Our staff also need each other. Every teammate is critical. Hurricane Helene brought to the forefront what our BCS team has always done: help meet students' needs so they can grow and thrive. We began our recovery work from a strong foundation of resources and wellness supports that had been in place for years. And now, as we face the opportunities and challenges of reconstruction, just like Ms. Pittman's student so eloquently said, "We must never give up." Not only will we not give up, we will build on our strengths, embrace new opportunities, lead with our hearts, and create a future where every student and staff member thrives. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Johnson. I just want to take a moment and, you know, acknowledge everything that you just said. Very impactful presentation. And, you know, this concept of, you know, we have 21,000, you know, plus or minus students in our school system. I think about that a lot, that our teachers and our school social workers, our school counselors and administrators, or all of our staff don't just interact with those students individually, those 21,000 students. They're bringing with them every day to school potentially a lot of trauma from the hurricane that maybe their broader family, maybe their cousins experienced, maybe their grandparents experienced displacement of some sort. And so it's just an incredible burden that our staff does bear in providing this support that, you know, on your slide of supporting every student, of providing this sense of safety, a sense of belonging, sustained emotional support. Providing those senses of safety and belonging and emotional support, they don't just happen. That's the result of really caring adults and professionals in our schools that show up to work every day with that in their heart, is to take care of every child that walks into that school, give them all the support that they need, listen and care about all those things they bring with them every day. And especially in this period of disillusionment, you know, before we get into this period of reconstruction, I can only imagine that it's just a whole universe of just traumas that show up from time to time. And I'm just so grateful that our school system, I've felt this certainly since my daughter started school in Buncombe County Schools, you know, several, 11 years ago, 12 years ago. But it really does have a sense of family where we do. We do, in our core, in our heart, we are here to take care of each other. And it's evident every day that I walk into a school. And I've been just amazed. Every time I go to a, like, early graduation, or, you know, a school theater event, or a parent meeting, or just walk through the halls, I'm always just amazed that after everything that our community's been through, we're still showing up like that every day, doing our best to make it and actually making amazing things happen for students. And seeing the joy on their face when they actually get to complete that theater performance their senior year they thought maybe might not happen, you know. It's an incredible thing that our staff are doing. And I just want to express my gratitude to you for this presentation and Dr. Jackson, our staff, all of your hard work during the hurricane, after the hurricane, and beyond. I know we've got our work cut out for us still. And speaking to the point that, you know, we'll talk about our budget here in a minute, but we are, as a board, we are going to be requesting, you know, that our level of support right now that helps provide this sense of safety and belonging and sustained emotional support for all of our students to be successful, that we've got to keep that going. We can't go, you know, back to some lesser level of service at this point in time. So I just appreciate you bringing all this up and clarifying. There's so many points in here. It's very insightful. So thank you. Any other board members having any questions or thoughts? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. I appreciate it. Okay. It is now time for public comment. I will ask our attorney, Ashley Leonard, to read our public comment instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is now time for public comment. As a reminder, speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. All speakers will have precisely three minutes to speak and must adhere to guidelines set forth in BCS Policy 2310, Public Participation, Including All Reasonable Rules Established by the Superintendent. Profane language, making threats, or revealing confidential student or staff information will not be allowed. Please address the board as a whole. Please note that the board will not be able to respond directly to public comment.
Mr. Chair, there are seven public comments tonight. The first speaker is Walter Plotkin. The first speaker is Joan Hoffman.
Good evening. I'm Joan Hoffman. I'm a CTE teacher at A.C. Reynolds High School. My kids go to Glen Arden Elementary. I come to you today with so much gratitude and thanks. I'm not sure everyone realizes what an incredible community we have at Buncombe County Schools. My family survived Hurricane Helene, but my home sustained more than $50,000 in damages with no help from my insurance and very little help from FEMA after so many appeals. It was the school community that continues to show up for me and my family. From Owen High School all the way to Lester Elementary, staff members have come to my aid in so many ways. I am here today feeling more hopeful than ever that my home will one day be repaired. I would also like to thank the A.C. Reynolds High School PTSA who collected financial contributions for our students, families, and our staff and for getting me in touch with an incredible group from Louisiana who, in the days following the hurricane, helped me gut the first four feet of my home. I would like to thank my former boss and Director of the Buncombe County Schools Foundation, Ms. Christie Cheek, and all those who serve on the foundation for my Employee Assistance Grant. Work was finally started on excavating the exterior of my home a few weeks ago, just when my husband suffered a debilitating subarachnoid hemorrhage during second period. I would also like to thank the staff at A.C. Reynolds who covered my classes, Ms. Alexander, for calling and offering assistance along with Ms. Hendricks. Rocket Country showed up for me again with so much love and help. Last Friday, my home is now waterproof, and my husband was discharged from the neuro ICU. Tuesday, at 5:00 a.m., I got a text from Ms. Page. She had a message from a group who was looking to help someone with construction work. I met them at my home that day at 5:00 p.m., and when I opened the door, I was surprised to see Mr. Barry Lance, a retired BCS math teacher working with Trinity of Fairview. Today, his crew from Lancaster, Pennsylvania helped me demo my children's bedrooms, my den, and a bathroom. At the same time, a truck showed up to remove more than 2,400 cubic feet of debris from my front yard that I've been staring at for seven months. I can't describe the feeling of raking up tiny pieces of drywall, thinking about planting the grass seeds there this weekend. My home is now a clean slate because of the incredible people here at Buncombe County Schools. And tonight is our school board votes on a budget that keeps our students whole. I hope there are county commissioners watching, and they're at home and hearing my story, that we cannot balance our budgets on the backs of our students. We must fully fund all the Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County School budgets. It is what is right in the wake of this destruction. Thank you for your service, Dr. Jackson, Mr. Tina, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Lewis, Ms. Churchill, Ms. Clemmons, and Mr. Martin, and Mr. Elliott, from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Wilcox.
I'm a strong supporter of public education and believe that schools have the capacity to help our kids learn basic knowledge, social skills, and life lessons. I remember a school program from when my kids were young, a decade or more ago, I was surprised to hear the chorus selection, a Twenty One Pilots song called "Stressed Out." The whole thing talks about the stress of adulthood, and one verse says this: "Used to play pretend, give each other different names. We would build a rocket ship and then we'd fly it far away. Used to dream of outer space, but now they're laughing out our face, saying, 'Wake up, you need to make money.'" Yeah. Well, I also remember my kids singing "We're Going to Be Friends" by The White Stripes, and I believe basic civic responsibility is taught by our schools. I would be naive to think everyone's intentions are the same as mine, and that abundant life for all may not be the intention for a public education, even though I think teachers and staff and this board work tirelessly to shape our kids toward that reality. Today is International Workers' Day, where we celebrate workers, and we stand in solidarity with them. Workers fought for an eight-hour workday in the later 1800s, and still today, a fair wage and protections in their employment. Those who forget or refuse to learn from their history will repeat it. So it seems ever important for our kids to learn that workers' rights are hard-fought, and that power doesn't easily cede resources and benefits, because its focus is often on the workers' production and not their abundant life. On International Workers' Day, Rights Day, I hope to illuminate the importance of workers' movements that gather with a goal to be in, not to be in conflict with power, but to better balance the impact of power toward other deeply important goals like satisfaction with employment, just pay, and benefits, limitations on work expectations, so that the workplace serves everyone. To meet a worker's basic need in Buncombe County, we need to meet or exceed $23.15 for every worker. One day, our students will grow up, and some will be workers, and some will be in positions of power overseeing workers. It's easy when one achieves a position of power to feel resistance by workers naming their needs, but organized movements are what elevate voices and create an inroad for those who may not have a capacity to be heard without numbers. Tonight, I celebrate our teachers and everyone who gives their time and energy to the Buncombe County and North Carolina Association of Educators, all those who advocate to enhance the education profession and advance public education, especially the union president here in Buncombe County, Sean Appel, for all her hard work. Teachers unionize to ensure their voices are heard and that their work relationship is balanced, just, and fair. Public schools are better off when teachers unionize, negotiating their terms and coming to their work in agreement with the empowered. May we treat our teachers with dignity and respect, and on this day, may we stand in solidarity with the Association of Educators that seek the best of the publication.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Suzie Heinisch, and I'm here as a concerned parent of children attending Estes Elementary, a school with a longstanding reputation for academic excellence and strong community ties. But recently, our school has been grappling with serious challenges that I worry have the potential to affect the quality of education our children receive. One of the most pressing issues is the exponential growth we're seeing in South Asheville. Our community is expanding rapidly, and Estes is feeling the effects. Classrooms are maxed along with classroom space, shared spaces get congested, and staff are working hard to meet the needs of a growing student body. These conditions are making it more difficult to maintain the quality of education, but can also seriously affect teacher morale as they are being spread very thin. We've also seen the unfortunate loss of our dedicated STEM programming, which once offered hands-on innovative learning opportunities that excited and challenged students. In a world that increasingly values science and technology, the absence of STEM at the elementary level is a step in the wrong direction. On top of that, the longer specials rotations now mean that our kids could go weeks without music or MPE, important outlets for creativity, expression, and physical activity. Lastly, I want to speak to an issue that's harder to quantify but critical to address: communication and collaboration with our current administration. Estes has an incredibly strong and engaged parent community, people who are eager to help, volunteer, raise funds, and support teachers in any way we can. But when we, but when our concerns aren't acknowledged or opportunities to collaborate are overlooked, that energy begins to fade. If that disconnect continues, we risk families exploring private or charter school alternatives, taking with them not just students, but valuable support that helps public education succeed. Our children thrive when parents and schools work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig White.
I'm Craig White with the Campaign for Southern Equality, and you know that because I've been here almost every month this year, talking about worldviews in conflict, specifically worldviews around gender. Most people my age grew up in a binary gender world. Gender was a box checked for you at birth, male or female, never to be changed. That checkbox defined everything in your life, from what you would wear, to what toys you would get, to what jobs you were allowed to have, and even how much you were allowed to get paid. Many young people today see it very differently. Gender is who you are. It is not something that's assigned to you. Gender isn't a simple checkbox. It's a lifetime creative journey. Like your faith identity or your cultural identity, it is something that deepens and matures over time. Today, one in four people under 25 identifies as some sort of LGBTQ+ identity, one in four. But even the straight kids, who are most comfortable with more conventional expressions of gender, would agree that it is not the adult's job to tell them, it is the child's job to say who they are. They are simply asking for us to see them and support them for who they are. And you've seen what we adults are giving them instead. You've heard the Moms for Liberty standing here, demanding that we police the restrooms, ban the books, and reverse the policies that care for all students. You've seen the laws and the orders blocking gender-diverse children from sports teams, from seeing themselves reflected in the curriculum, and from having access to healthcare. And how many gender-diverse children have been kicked out of their youth groups, their churches, even their family home. They ask us for love and acceptance, and we reject them, silence them, censor them, and punish them. But what if, what if we listen to them instead? What if they have something to teach us? What if we too can be free to escape those boxes and explore our own gender journeys? The kids hate it when they get assigned homework at this time of year, but I figure turnabout is fair play. So your assignment, should you choose to accept it, is to spend some time with gender-diverse young people. Spend some time with gender-diverse young people and see what they have to teach you. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
My name is Anna Guthie. I'm here today as a community member as well as an Estes-concerned parent. I'm one of a few parents that'll be speaking here in front of you tonight and talk about how budget costs are affecting our students, and the lack of communication and transparency is affecting our schools. And while there are three of us here tonight that are actually actively speaking, there's an army of us behind us that believe and are fighting for the same as the others in our community. We stand as representatives of many more parents that are upset at the state of Estes and countless more that would be here if they had the means. We all understand the challenges of balancing budgets and understand that these decisions are somewhat beyond the scope of this group. There are, however, additional avenues that we could be exploring if we were given proper communication. Specifically, Estes Elementary was forced to cut their STEM curriculum at the end of the 2024 school year. Research consistently shows that early STEM exposure significantly improves problem-solving skills, boosts student engagement, and is linked to higher graduation rates down the line. The foundation built in elementary school is not just academic, it's motivational. Students who find excitement in STEM at an early age are more likely to stay in school, pursue higher education, and enter high-demand fields that drive our economy. To take that away from our, to take that away now is to deny our children future opportunities, especially when we know the long-term payoff of these programs is worth the investment. As I touched on before, briefly previously, what has been particularly vexing is how this decision has been communicated, or rather, not communicated. Parents found out through informal channels with no call for input or support. We want to help. Give us that chance. Work with us to find alternative solutions, grants, fundraising, community partnerships. We were given no opportunity to ensure that this program had a chance to stay. We are in a time in our country where the majority, where major decisions are being made and implemented quickly. We cannot stand idle and assume that we can do nothing about it. These are our children and the future of our community. And while I never thought I would say this in this country, we are forced to prove the competency and value of public education at this time. We are a team. Please work with us and communicate with us so that we can achieve our goals and better support our children. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent, and fellow community members. My name is Sarah Schur, and I'm a parent of two kids and one rising kid for Estes Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I come to you not just as a parent, but as an advocate for the future of our children and the strength of our public schools. I want to first begin by thanking our teachers, the teachers' assistants, the learning assistants and support staff of our elementary schools in Buncombe County. I am here tonight to express my concern about the current state of our elementary schools, specifically in three central areas: the lack of STEM programming, the loss of instructional assistance, and the growing problem of overcrowded classrooms. First, on STEM: science, technology, engineering, and math. These subjects are not just for high school or middle school students. Early exposure to STEM builds problem-solving skills, curiosity, and confidence. Right now, many of our elementary schools offer little to no dedicated STEM instruction. At Estes Elementary, this was an hour-long elective that was offered five days a week, every six weeks as a rotation. However, without this elective, it means our youngest learners are missing out on foundational opportunities at the exact age when their minds are the most curious and open to new concepts. If we want to prepare them for the world that they will inherit, we need to start now and not later. Second, the loss of classroom assistance has made it harder for teachers to teach and students to learn. Instructional aides provide essential support, especially in the early grades, where individual attention can make the difference between a student thriving or falling behind. When we remove those positions, we're not saving money, we're shifting the cost onto students' futures and our teachers' morale. And that brings me to school overcrowding. Some elementary classrooms now have up to 32 students. That is simply too many for one teacher to manage effectively, especially without support staff. Overcrowded classrooms strain resources, limit individualized attention, and create a learning environment that is more about control than curiosity. I urge the board to consider immediate and long-term solutions to these issues. I strongly encourage reinvesting in elementary STEM programs, prioritizing the rehiring of support staff, and addressing overcrowding with thoughtful resource allocation and staffing. These are not just budget-line items. These are conditions that shape our children's daily lives and long-term potential. I thank you again for the opportunity, for your time and attention. Please let us know if we can help assist you in any way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Board, the next item on our agenda is our action agenda: the approval of funding requests for current expense and capital appropriation, submission of the 2025-2026 preliminary budget to the county commissioners. We do not have a presentation this evening. Tina Thorpe is here for any questions. Dr. Jackson will speak to it briefly as well, but for the benefit of the public, I do want to share a few things about the budgets that we are proposing. Generally speaking, we propose two budgets. We have operations and capital, one for buildings and maintenance and that kind of thing, and the other for primarily teachers. Eighty-five percent roughly of our operational budget goes to paying professionals inside of our school buildings. So we have spent a lot of time over the last several months, we've had six work sessions this year as a board, dedicated a lot of time, and I want to express my gratitude to Tina and our budget team, our entire finance department, for the time it took for you to devise presentations for your board to teach us everything that we need to understand about this extremely complicated budget season. I will share one thing that I learned is that every source of funding that we have right now, it comes primarily from three levels: local government, state government, and federal government. Every single funding source that we have this year has a tremendous amount of uncertainty attached to it. And in your narrative, which I'm very grateful for, if you're a member of the public and you're interested in this year's budget, I encourage you to look at our agenda. There's a link to a narrative that was provided by Tina Thorpe, our CFO, that really does a great job of explaining all the uncertainty that is swirling around funding of public education in general, but specifically Buncombe County Schools. And so again, thank you for that narrative as well. It's incredibly informative. School boards don't have the ability to levy taxes ourselves. We can't raise our money outside of working with, say, PTAs and PTOs and having bake sales, all kinds of things like that, but we fully rely on local government, state government, federal government for all of our funding. And so it's important, if you care about public education, that you're advocating in that direction as well. We need to hear about the needs of our community for sure, and we will advocate for them with you, but we encourage everyone to understand the way school funding works, to understand the budget that we are proposing tonight, and to advocate for those folks that do control our funding sources. We also don't have the ability to go into debt, and that's a key piece to understand as well. We have a fund balance. We have a policy on our books that demands that we have a specific fund balance that provides a certain level of operational security for us if something were to happen. It is very treacherous when we have to start using that fund balance to cover operations, you know, on a yearly basis. And our fund balance has been healthy, but earlier this year, due to extenuating financial circumstances, the county pulled back $3.8 million back from the Buncombe County School System, some as well from Asheville City, in response to Hurricane Helene. And in order for us to maintain our staffing levels, like you heard earlier in the presentation from Dr. Johnson, the importance of our staffing levels to help provide a safe sense of belonging, a place where students can come and feel welcome and learn, we did use our, part of our fund balance to cover salaries of all of our staff, keep all of our buildings open for the rest of the year, and we will continue to do that as long as we have to. But it's really important that we, as a board, keep a close eye on our fund balance going forward. And in order for us to maintain our staffing levels, like you heard earlier in the presentation from Dr. Johnson, the importance of our staffing levels to help provide a safe sense of belonging, a place where students can come and feel welcome and learn, we did use our, part of our fund balance to cover salaries of all of our staff, keep all of our buildings open for the rest of the year, and we will continue to do that as long as we have to. But it's really important that we, as a board, keep a close eye on our fund balance going forward, and that we make wise decisions, and that we ask our county commissioners and our state representatives to fully fund our school system so that we can keep that healthy going forward. So, again, on behalf of our board, I just want to say thank you again to Tina Thorpe, our amazing CFO and your team for managing and protecting our finances to the degree that you do. It's the one thing I've learned in my time as a school board member is absolutely how complicated school finance is. It is incredible. And in the end, we are paying wonderful professional people who have caring hearts that come in and take care of our students and provide an excellent education. On the outside looking in, that may seem kind of easy, but it's not at all. And I just want to say thank you for your diligence in this budget preparation. Again, all of our six work sessions were recorded this year. They are available on our YouTube channel. They cover really important topics, some of which I just spoke to, but you can go back and review each one of them if you have any curiosity, and also there's this great narrative to visit as well. With that, Dr. Jackson, I would like, if you just have a few words, high level, about what we will be voting on here shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that, and I appreciate again the work of our Board of Education, the amount of time and energy that you've spent digging into our budget. We know that certainly, and we've heard tonight about the devastation that our community has gone through in this past year, and we understand that finances are in a different place than they might have been for our county over a year ago. As our board is aware, the North Carolina general statutes require us to submit a request to our county commissioners for both capital outlay and current expense appropriations on or before May 15th. Tomorrow, we've been invited to present the result of your determination this evening to our commissioners, and we look forward to doing so. We will be presenting, provided the board so agrees, tomorrow, a recommendation for an increase to the Buncombe County schools budget, an increase that is required for us to be able to maintain the level of services that we've provided our students, our families, and our staff members as well. Within that increase, the requested increase is a total of $10,315,520. There are three major areas for that increase. The first is an increase in salaries and benefits. We anticipate a state increase in salary and benefits cost from the state. We have employees who are paid through local sources and employees who are paid through federal sources, and when the state increases salaries, they do not provide funding for those employees. And so to meet the need for increasing salaries for all employees, including those not paid by state dollars, is a, part of that $10 million request is $4.2 million to cover that increase in salary and benefits. In our budget, there's also recognition of the immutable cost of operation increases that we have each year, increases in utility costs, increases in the simple act of turning on the lights and running water, increases in our insurance costs. We are working diligently to decrease insurance costs, but we understand that increases will occur nonetheless. And so within that $10 million increase is a request for an increase of $2,015,200 to cover those immutable costs of operations. And then the final $4.1 million covers our ability to maintain our services. So again, this evening, the superintendent's recommendation to the Board of Education for your consideration is that the local budget request of the county commissioners be increased over last year by $10,315,520 to allow Buncombe County schools to maintain the level of service we have provided to our students and families.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, for clarifying that.
Board members, I'll open the floor for any discussion or questions you may have. Again, we have spent six work sessions diving into this, so this is not our first time seeing this, and I presume there may not be a lot of discussion or questioning, but if you have any, please. The floor is up.
There's always discussion from me.
Okay.
A couple of things that I want to mention is that, from a capital project standpoint, and I'm looking up at Clark White, who is this, I don't know if there's a smarter person on this earth when it comes to our facilities and buildings and things that we need in Buncombe County. We have a Article 39 money which is allocated that, when the bill took effect years ago, it was dollars for facilities issues, over $100,000. This year, I'm serving on that commission, and this year, the total amount of dollars that we're likely to spend is $10 million for both Buncombe County and Asheville City schools. That's quite a bit less than what we've been able to have in the past. So for schools, and we are aware of schools like ESTEES and Glen Arden that are busting at the seams. I wish we could write a check for $45 million and build a new Glen Arden, but as I think Rob said it, that we can't borrow money. We can't go out and, you know, get a debt for a new building. So, it's not just our regular budget, it's really going to impact our facility pot of money as well. So, you know, this year, instead of doing some things that we had as top priority because of the amount that we received, which was, we have about 85% of the total pupil attendance across Asheville City and Buncombe County schools, so that gives you about eight and a half million dollars. That's not a lot of money when it comes to roofs and all kinds of needs, fire alarm systems and that kind of thing. So I hope the public realizes that we are aware of places that need work. WD Williams is in the Owen District, and I went and visited that school. They are currently under renovation, and right now, we're not going to be able to finish that renovation because of the dollars available. So I think it's important for you to know that. The second thing is, if we have the bill in the House right now that, if it's approved about taking that Article 39 money and using it for operations or facilities, then, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have some issues when it comes to, you know, operational money or facility money. So, when I think of what schools need, and people have, are tired of hearing me say this, but we need people in our schools. We need more counselors, we need more social workers, we need more nurses, and I know that. I wish that the state would allot a lot more of those for our kids, because our kids need it. And again, just as Rob Elliott said, go in and take a look at our budget sessions, look at the finance world of school system. I was in banking, and it is totally different, but we are aware of things that need to happen. It's the fact that we're not getting what we need from the state, particularly from the state level. But thank you to Tina. Tina, again, when I say she's, she is the smartest financial person that I know, I wish she would have worked for me at the bank, but she does a phenomenal job and her team, and I appreciate the fact that you've got us to this level, and I absolutely agree that we've got to ask our county commissioners for more money. It's going to be tough, so if you haven't been involved, take a look at what's going on in our county and at the state and national level in regards to public schools.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Any other board member questions or comments before we move on? Oh, Mr. Cheatham.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Dr. Jackson, the $4.1 million increase we're asking for, could you just expand on what it means to expand services? What are some of those services that we'll be able to keep?
Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. We utilize local dollars to have more counselors in our school system than the state provides. We use local dollars to have more assistant principals in our school system than the state provides, and more school nurses, and more school social workers. And so those local dollars allow us to build upon what the state provides and keep those services at the same level. Additionally, as this board is aware, we've had to utilize our fund balance to balance our budget over the course of the last several years, and so it allows us to move forward in getting to the point that we no longer have to rely on fund balance, because fund balance is a finite amount. This year, our fund balance, because we'd worked so hard to right-size our school system, we were able to mitigate an unexpected almost $3.9 million cut. The fund balance has been hit and hit hard, and so we can't rely on it to the same level. And so that $4.1 million allows us to maintain our services in a time when we don't have the fund balance to rely on that we may have had previously, or that we did have previously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. Any other board members? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve our funding request for current expense and capital appropriation submission of the 2025-2026 preliminary budget to the county commissioners. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There are motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries and the action item is approved. Thank you, board. Thank you for all the hard work. Next, onto our consent agenda, we have minutes from April 3rd, 2025, open session, regular meeting; minutes, April 7th, 2025, special called work session; personnel report, May 1st, 2025; 2024-2025 budget amendment number six; approval of the 2024-2025 enrollment and facilities needs report; sole source procurement request; elevation platform and strategies licenses. I'll remind the board, if anyone needs to pull one of these items out of the consent agenda for any further discussion, you're always welcome to request that. Any questions or comments from the board on the consent agenda? I would just like to point out one, one thing, again, for the benefit of the public. This enrollment and facilities needs report, there is also a link to that on our agenda. It is a very informative report that our finance and facilities department puts together for us every year that looks at all of the student attendance at each of our schools, the school capacities from a square footage perspective, and also things like permits, building permits in that area, multifamily and single-family permits that are forthcoming. And it's an amazing analysis of sort of demographics of the county and how our school facilities are situated and suited, or where the opportunities and needs are. So I wanted to highlight that for the general public to look into as well. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is passed. Next is the information agenda. We have finance reports, notification of informal construction and repair projects and change orders, and policies for first reading. I'll ask our policy chair, Greg Cheatham, if he has any quick notes for our board to consider around the policies for first reading. Mr. Cheatham.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. The policy committee tonight brings two policies to the board for first reading. Policy 3225 is technology responsibility use, the major... Getting some help from Ms. Franklin. Policy 3225, 4312, 7320, the technology responsibility use. The major revision there is that students, parents, and employees will now be informed annually of the responsibility use guidelines to include AI, which is a change. The second policy, which is 5071, 7351, electronically stored information retention. The major change there is that employee emails, staff emails, will now automatically be held for three years. So those were the highlights. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Cheatham. I'll ask for a motion to approve the information agenda, please. Is there a second? Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. As per announcements, our next Board of Education regular meeting is June 5th, 2025, at 5:30 PM here in the auditorium. Work session updates and closed session began at 4:00 PM in the executive conference room at 175 Bingham Road. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.